Twenty-eight hours and head coach Dean Wilson's back again. And then Zan, it's been a couple of days here and there getting the kids involved. That's under progression according to DRY. So I'm looking forward to getting things started and getting on the scooter. Any questions?
Thank you. Ms. Fries.
This month we've just been getting ready for students to come back. Meeting with staff one-on-one to see what they're looking forward to and anything they need for the upcoming school year. Myself and Catherine Gilson attended the Science Reading Summit this July. All Advent went to SAI, which is great professional development for us as well as bonding time for us as a team. Last week, we went through new teacher training and that was fun to see all the new teachers and get them onboarded, ready for the school year. We had a PDIS work day where we went through and created a behavior matrix and an edgematrix for Little Husky. And RadRide was really fun. I was working with Pan design people into Wings Park and just amount of people that had amazing things to say about Moyn and the community was super fun. And then all of August, we've had a couple of students back for extended school year to get them transitioned into our building. Before everybody's back and that's been really well, going really well as also so. Any questions?
Thank you. You'll see us.
Same thing. Happy we've had Back to School Night is this week Thursday from four to seven at Wings Park. We have three new teachers starting in our building, Ms. Schmitz, Ms. Swint and Mr. Server. They all came to new teacher training and their excitement is super contagious. It was so fun to see their energy and to see the world through their eyes. We went to the new elementary institute through SAI, Haley and I had the opportunity to do that. It was really amazing to hear all of us pour some place for us and to just help guide our path. Also great collaboration time for Haley and I on the drive down and back. Had BLT and PDIS meetings, TLC meetings. The local area churches and police department came August 12th to Wings Park and did backpack giveaway. We have some bags left over, those will be handed out at Back to School Night. And then I just continue to meet new staff and prepare for back to school. We had sixteen hundred riders at RadRide and I cannot say enough of the compliments about the student helpers that were given by all of those sixteen hundred people. They were really impressed with the kids that they had done throughout the community, impressed with the school itself, impressed with everything to do with RadRide. SAI conference in Des Moines was a wonderful time at the Advent team and then just new teacher orientation. Was not just great for my three teachers, but to really get to know all the new teachers in the district.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Ditto the SAI stuff on my end. We excitedly enough had four of our six returning Odyssey students starting day one by going to classes at OMS this year, which is really exciting. We're not having to wait for transition. We are also working with our fourth and fifth graders. They are going to be doing some community work this year and they're going to start with working at the pantry using those skills they are building. O2 is streamlining their intake process. So Lindsay Sorenson and I are doing small workshop sessions instead of meeting with each family individually, which takes weeks. We're doing more of a workshop method and doing it in small groups so that we can be more effective. Other than that, it's all about that.
Questions? Thank you. Mr. Earl.
Yeah, a lot of the same stuff that the other principals have talked about. First of all, we've got four or half four open positions in our building to fill. Super excited about the individuals that we've got coming in to fill those. Amy Williams will be teaching sixth and seventh grade math. Justin Peaker is going to be teaching fifth and sixth grade reading in ELA. Christina Williams will be teaching six through eight science. And then he was mentioned by Mr. Wilkie, Nick Lampier, the football coach, is going to be coming into our building and teaching fifth through eighth grade special education as well. Pending board approval. Beginning of the year, professional development, a few different things. We had our TLC work day on August 11th, new teacher orientation, which already been mentioned. Certified staff professional development starts tomorrow and goes through the end of the week. And then classified staff professionals will be able to come in on a few different opportunities and take part in some of those ongoing opportunities as well. Open house later this week on Thursday from four to seven. So just a chance to get all of our students in the building or give them an opportunity anyway to come in the building, meet teachers, kind of run through their box schedule, find out where their classes are. And then our fifth graders that are transitioning to the building, we're going to do a special extended orientation for them as well that evening to kind of get them acclimated to our building. Scheduling is for the most part done and students will be getting those at that open house. Had some individuals or principals already talked about SAI, just a great opportunity to team build within our team there. Learn about lots of trends, methodology, best practices, things of that nature in the teaching and education profession. And then the highlight generally is the legal counsel for SAI. Matt Carver gives kind of a synopsis of recent legislation and what impact that would have in our buildings and what we need to do to make sure that we're approaching those and handling those the way that we need to do that. And then obviously networking with other district leaders and then just that whole team building component. And then at the bottom there, just a few pictures of our re-beadification of the building there by our maintenance and custodial staff, gym floor, cafeteria floor. Got a fresh wax there. And then the park room floor is going super excited. We were able to have the carpet tore out of there and they sealed and finished the concrete there. So a much better learning space and learning environment for those art students. And I think the custodial staff would be appreciative of that as well.
Do you have equitable class sizes in the middle school for this upcoming year?
Much, much more equitable, yeah. We've done really made a conscious effort to balance them out as much as we can essentially. And then we've got the high school helping out, taking on a little bit more exploratories and a couple of core subjects up there of our eighth graders as well. So that is able to get some of the congestion out of the building and get some of those class numbers down a little bit. So yeah, we're in a better spot than we were last year. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
And just kind of run through every, you've heard pretty much everything that I've been in. I've been with a lot of people right here in our conference. RadRide was a big day, went well. Been working, we have support initiatives students coming this year as well. Meeting with different organizations, IJEG and NICC. Trying to touch base with all the activities that are going on right now and have not been involved, have been invalidated, but haven't talked that group particularly yet. We had a hall of fame committee meeting and I'm learning about that process. And we did pick a candidate for this year, so I've been, I've reached out to them and I'm working on that right now. Trying to get partnership up with these Penn, I was off that on Friday meeting with them. And then school donations, we had Polly Brotto, if anybody knows her, I worked with her a long time ago when I was here at the alternative school. And she ran a big fundraiser thing, a book fair that she does and donated to our school this year. So and gave us gift cards for the high school and just the bottom of lots of school supplies. So yeah, very generous and very thankful that she did that. So that's kind of how my month's been going, just meeting lots of new people. So actually tomorrow, first day, I'll probably meet a lot of people. I still have a lot of teachers I have in my head, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
I did have a question.
Before I change, is this program, are they coming? One is from PAX. Okay. And then the other one is, is it CSET? It was who they had last year. I'd have to go back and double check what it is, but there were two different ones.
Not beret, just.
Just around. Nope.
Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda items.
I move to approve the consent agenda as I presented. I'll say it.
Throw away the motion that they said to approve the consent agenda, does present, is there any discussion? If not, in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. Move on to item number eight. Pro transfer funds from general fund Pebble activity fund in the amount of thirty-three thousand two seventy-five. Thank you, state court.
So basically every year we go through the previous fiscal year and look at things that were paid for out of the activity fund. And review those things and ask for more approval to pay for those things with general fund and Pebble fund money. Because we're allowed to do that by state code. So the Pebble fund, we're looking to pay for safety equipment. And the general fund, we're looking to pay our training expenses with performance recap. So we enter an agreement with them every year for the school year. So the total of, the total of that tab plus the medical supplies they need for that. We're looking to take, we're looking to reimburse the activity fund from general fund for that total expense. And then Rydel is basically the big vendor for the safety equipment or was for twenty-four twenty-five with reconditioning shoulder pads and helmets for football. Once in a while we'll like, you know, we bought like a pad for under the baskets or, you know, those types of things. Those would be considered safety expenses. New wrestling man, not necessarily new wrestling man, but those, those types of things. We bought softball helmets and baseball helmets and different things like that. Those are all considered eligible safety expenses, safety equipment expenses that we can reimburse the activity fund for. Then we're not looking to the gate. Because gate is generally about the only revenue that we have besides concessions in the activity fund. We're not looking for that to pay for this stuff. Anyway, it's an annual practice and this will be, you know, the entry will be made and factated to be captured in fiscal twenty-five, so.
Recommend approval.
I have a motion to approve the transfer funds from general fund to the activity fund.
Taylor made the motion, Taylor's saying to approve the transfer of funds from general fund, Pebble fund to the activity fund in the amount of thirty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. Item B, approve second reading of IASB policy, primary policies.
All right, so this is the second time around for these policies. There's any requests to look at any, any, any one of them specifically and be happy to go through it? Otherwise I would recommend approval of the group.
I move to approve the second reading of the IASB policy, primary policies as presented.
Taylor made the motion, Eric, a second to approve the second reading of the IASB policy, primary policies.
Is there any discussion?
Not in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. Item C, approve twenty-five, twenty-six Weyman Center employee handbook.
All right, so this is probably the last time I would recommend doing a separate wellness center handbook. We're probably going to eventually close the gap and just put this into our regular staff handbook as these artists are regular staff employees. But as we continue to understand, involve in running the wellness center, we got a separate handbook for the staffs that they have kind of their procedures and policies to follow specifically and that are just kind of separate from the school. So this was updated, Liz Eser went through and updated this, kind of she's running the show now. And also we have new software that got installed, so Civic Rec replaced. What was the old one? Do you remember? The old software that the police used to use. I didn't make it. There was, I can't recall the point, but anyway, all those new codes and requirements for running Civic are in there as well. That I'd recommend approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Weyman Center employee handbook.
Eric made the motion, Taylor's saying to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Weyman Center employee handbook. Is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. Move on to district level reports. Mr. Reiver.
My report's pretty brief this, this month. I'll, I'll talk a lot next month as we review the cards and all those things tied into it. That's what a lot of work's going to be here in the coming month, upcoming weeks ahead of that deadline on the fifteenth of September. And then just getting everybody, you know, their lineups and budgets out, contracts, onboarding folks, getting benefits selected, getting ready for the audit. So that's pretty much what's going on in the business office. And then we have fifth election, so that'll take place on November fourth. And the papers, nomination papers are available in central office. First day to file the papers is Monday, the twenty-fifth, also the first day of school. So last day, Thursday, September eighteenth, five p.m.
That's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Sorry.
So all the things that the principals talked about, pretty bold then. The new teacher in service last week was awesome. It's just always fun to see those new, fresh smiling faces come in the district and to kind of, it's a chance for us to also relive and talk through all of our systems, all of our programs, how we, how we educate students and what we do that's maybe different than what their teacher prep did or some, you know, the other school districts that they were in. So it's also a chance for our administrators to also dive into that same work. So they got to spend time doing that. You can see those, all those new faces there. And that's what it looks like when everybody's in the room, intently learning. I think the analogy of trying to drink water through a fire hose, actively works. We do try to give it all to them and then support them over the course of the year with mentors, instructional coaches, their principals, and then district level supports as well as to continue to grow their work. The new growth is not quite done, but it should be done. It kind of fits some slowdowns with the rain the last couple of weeks, but then it should be punching that off the list here by the end of the week. We had a lingering to-do project with the new parking lot. So we had signs that were removed when we did the parking lot and we had ordered those and they came in end of last summer. Then we had the drought last year and so we couldn't get posts in the ground. So they waited till this year. So those signs have been, if you look out there, it's all brand new signs in the parkway and also in the parking lot. So those have all been updated and remodeled, or not remodeled, just replaced. Paid asphalt came and did some asphalt work for us. The asphalt going between Little Husky and the middle school is crumbling and very deteriorating, so we put down a new code there. We had two days without power here in central office and the bus barn. Never in my wildest dreams would I think that we'd have to replace power lines that were underground, but we did. So it was exciting. We painted the ceiling at Sigheart Gym and also greeded the floor. New wax in the floor, it is very sharp. It's kind of pacing on the cake for that, that building and looks really clean. You saw the picture from Mr. Hurley of the new, up to some, no, it's the old, it's the original concrete floor. So they grinded down and then it's, it's, they patch all the cracked and everything and then that's the finished product, so. This was kind of a test project for us. We've done this other, so Wings Park has this in the hallway, so that's the surface that we did. We did this in the middle school auditorium, same type of thing. And now this is the third time we've done this type of project with all the fits that we've had with the flooring in the high school hallway. So this is a new company with us working with them and this is kind of their test to show us what they can do. So this is a new company with us working with them and this is kind of their test to show us what they can do. Thinking that we might go that direction with the high school hallway just because it's maintenance free. You don't have to fight with glue or any other products. It's the next best thing close to Terrazzo. It's got kind of industrial look, industrial feel, so terminal will do really well. And you can grind to a certain depth to give the aggregate you want to pop out of the concrete. So obviously the more you go, the more stone you get when they do it. Furniture, this is kind of what it looks like when it comes in before it gets installed. We don't have it completely done yet, so you'll get a picture of that next month. So that is lots and lots and lots of projects trying to get punched out here before school starts.
Any questions? Thank you. Discussion accomplished by board members. Taylor. Taylor. Thank you. Erica. What did everyone think of the work session?
I'm scared they did a nice job.
Value?
Yeah, it's all like, what was out at the rain center, but a little more, smaller group, so more personal.
We're here for the next month, correct? So great.
Yeah, I think next month's a little bit more, the content tonight was a little bit of a repeat from what they did before. I think next month's a little bit more forward thinking, have some planning and, yeah, vision moving forward and diving in and interacting with, you know, your governance, so.
This spring in legislature, was there something that came out to where all elected officials had to take some sort of training?
Yeah, it's a ninety-eight minute class for open meeting laws that you'll have to take. And we, I haven't waited to see anything from ISB because they'll produce the course for us and you'll have to take it. And I haven't seen anything from them yet.
So at next month, wouldn't be as?
No, no, it'll be something I think you have to do like on your own. I don't know if we can do as a board. We might be able to, but that's something that they'll provide to us. But yeah, I can follow up with that. I was kind of was expecting to have something by now, but we don't.
I think so many days after the election. What's happening?
Right, I think it's ninety days after the election. Maybe it is going to be delayed until election cycle.
What coming events, meetings, announcements?
Just the next meeting or another work session, five fifteen here on September fifteenth. It is just because of the cycle of the month, it's about as early as it can be for the third Wednesday, or I'm sorry, the third Monday. And then our board meeting to follow. And then just a reminder, we're moving to the second Monday in October, so at six o'clock. So that one will also feel like it's coming up quick. So this, we'll talk about that again September.
I will move to a chair. Motion made by Jill, that's my favorite, so we adjourned during discussion. Here you go, a little bit of raise your hand. Motion put out to make that one.
Thanks, Chris.
Good. Okay, change it. Good.
I just remember seeing.
Well, I think senior, no, one's going to be a junior and.
The voting block, I'm still catching on.